I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting held April 15th.
I will second that. All those in favor of approving the minutes from April 15th, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that item has passed. Moving on then to proclamations. We have a proclamation today to recognize the Conservation District in Center County. We'll be proclaiming April 20th to 26th as Conservation District Week in Center County. So, everyone who is here to speak, I can't see very well on the.
If you want to actually.
While it's here.
Well, we have.
If you'd like to come up to the table.
Yeah, it's up to whichever, whichever works better.
Okay.
Do that. Or you can share, two come here and two stay there. That way we can give you all an opportunity.
I think the owl will pick you up.
Yeah.
At the table.
Very good. Good morning, Commissioners. We are here as we celebrate Conservation District Week. Here representing the Conservation District is myself as the Conservation District Manager. And with me today, I have Robert Shannon, who's the Chair of our Board of Directors. Chris Myers is our Resource Conservation Supervisor. And Lee Fellman is our Watershed Specialist. The conservation movement in this country really started during the Dust Bowl where our country lost large amounts of topsoil and prompted the government to take steps to correct that situation. A few years later, in Pennsylvania, the Conservation District law was enacted that allowed counties to form Conservation Districts. Here in Center County, the Conservation District was formed in 1954 at the request of local farmers and other interested citizens who had concerns about soil and water conservation. And the basis of Conservation Districts is really about local people helping folks in their community. That was the basis of forming Conservation Districts, and that's still the basis of the Conservation District today. Our roots are in agriculture and helping farmers protect and preserve their soil and their water resources. And we still do many of those things. We bring in lots of grant dollars to help farmers protect their soil resources and protect our streams. Since then, we've expanded into many other areas. The Conservation District implements state regulations that deal with construction in urban areas and the protection of soil erosion on those areas. Chris is in charge of those programs. We help rural landowners not, who don't necessarily engage in agriculture but still have issues on their properties, and our watershed specialist deals with that quite a bit. So, we thank you for recognizing Conservation District Week. And I think I'd like to turn it over to, to Robert Shannon, our, our Chairman, for some words.
Yeah, I'll just be brief. You know, as Jim mentioned, you know, Conservation District Week is not just celebrated here in Center County, it's celebrated throughout the country. There are, there are over 3,000 Conservation Districts throughout the country. We're really fortunate here in Center County to have a dedicated staff that, you know, they're the boots on the ground that are protecting our clean streams, promoting soil health, and environmental education, among many other things. On behalf of the Board of Directors, I'd, I'd like to say that we're also fortunate to have a Board of Commissioners that's really supportive of our Board of Directors and, and of our staff. So, through your support and our staff's hard work, we're fostering a healthier environment for current and future generations here in Center County. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay. All right. Steve, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add since you've been part of that board for a while.
Well, I, first of all, thank you for coming in. I, I'm always amazed at the, at the good work you do. You administer and actually take care of so many grants and so many projects and so many opportunities to, to improve soil health, erosion mitigation. I, all I can do is really say thank you for everything that you, that you've done over the many, many years. How long have you been with the Conservation District, Jim?
It's been 34 years.
Wow. Well, thank you for your dedication.
That's a pretty good one. And, you know, we have a lot of folks that are new to the, new to the organization, but at the same time, it's that combination of the two that, that make it all work. So, it's all. And work with so many partner agencies, both at the state and federal level. Maybe touch on that a little bit. Who all, we in the Conservation District work with?
Yes, that's a good point. We have many partners at, at all levels. Many of them are local, including some of the watershed groups that we work with, Clearwater Conservancy, Western PA Conservancy, Trout Unlimited. We have state partners, many state agencies, the DEP, the State Conservation Commission, and on the federal level, Fish and Wildlife Service. And I, I know I, there's many others.
NRCS.
Yes, NRCS. And it takes teamwork among all those partners to accomplish a lot of these projects. And we're fortunate to have that.
But that's what it's all about. I think your leadership and, and the leadership of many, many before you and some folks that have been on there for maybe, what, 50 years perhaps?
Perhaps, yes.
Yeah, there's been a lot of good, good partners in, in the community that.
Yes.
That made it all work and have done some good work for our local environment. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. When I've had the opportunity to chat with your staff up there in the, in your offices, I've been really impressed with really the level of technical and scientific expertise that they bring to their work and how they're able to implement solutions to help improve soil and water quality that are doable and feasible for local landowners as well as, you know, based in, you know, some really significant expertise that they bring to those discussions. So, really grateful for all of their work.
Absolutely. You sure there's nothing that you want to share with us?
I'm happy to be here. I'm new, but I'm having a great time and I feel like my work is very meaningful.
Oh, good.
So, I'm very lucky for this opportunity.
You, you're about ready to get into your busy season, I reckon, too.
Yes.
So, that's good.
Oh, yeah.
It's spring approach. Well, good. How many farm visits do you think you'll do?
I don't know yet. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be all over the place.
Yeah, that's, that's a big part of what the Conservation District does, is work with the local farming community to improve, you know, best practices and, and that'll be, that'll be a big part of, of your responsibilities, man. So, it's all good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Should we take a motion on the proclamation then?
Yep. I will proudly move to adopt proclamation number 19, proclaiming April 20th through 26th as Conservation District Week in Center County.
And I will second that. All those in favor of adopting proclamation 19 of 2025 proclaiming April 20th to 26th as Conservation District Week in Center County, do so by saying aye.
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 Okay.
That motion has passed. So, if you would like to go, I guess Commissioner Durson, if you'd like to.
It might be a little tough to take a picture with one of us, but we'll, we'll sneak you in.
Oh, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
I did not want to share jokes with anybody today.
Why don't you center up on, I guess, right on Belfont there on the map.
Move a little more this direction. The philosophy I'll squeeze in between the two flags, I think, will be beautiful. I think, which one is?
Oop.
Conservation.
There we go.
Thank you. Follow smile.
Great work. Okay. All right. Thanks. Thank you, sir. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks, please. Appreciate it. Indeed.
All right. I think our next item then is another proclamation proclaiming May 11th to 17th as Mount Nittany Health Week in Center County. I think we have some representatives from the hospital here with us today. If you'd like to come on up and if you could introduce yourself, I see Mr. Kissinger there.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Pleasure to be here.
Thanks for being here with us.
Oh, no, thank you for having me again and really appreciate the opportunity to be back here before you. And so, really, I wanted to first start by saying thank you to the county, the Board of Commissioners, as well as the residents of Center County for their continued support of Mount Nittany Health and Mount Nittany Medical Center. I, I think we both share the same commitment to the health and well-being of the county. And so, we're proud to play that role as a hospital and health system provider here. We're also very honored and appreciative that you would take the time to recognize the staff at the medical center and the health system. This does mean a lot to the team. You know, Mount Nittany Health Week is really our local celebration as part of National Hospital Week that has been celebrated throughout the United States since 1953. And there are more than 6,000 hospitals nationwide that employ over 7 million providers and caregivers. And National Hospital Week, and in our case, Mount Nittany Health Week, is just a way to show our thanks for their dedication and continued support of the community. And community is, is what we're about. We've been very much rooted in Center County since 1902. We got our start right here in Belfont.
Right here in this building.
Right here in this building. It was one of the hospitals that was initially started by two physicians who started an eight-bed infirmary in an old Victorian home downtown. But yes, our roots are, are very much so here in Belfont. And, and we're proud that over the years, we've been able to grow and evolve in order to meet the ever-changing healthcare needs of the community. And so, that's why we're very delighted that next summer, we'll be opening up our new patient tower, our new 168-bed private room tower to improve the care environment, deploying state-of-the-art technology. This was also a testament to the commitment of our staff at the medical center who helped design this particular hospital. And also, in the very few weeks, we're going to be delighted to make an announcement about an investment right here in Belfont. And so, look forward to telling that story. But I just want to end by reading a, a portion, actually, it's the opening paragraph in our brand promise because I do think it captures the essence of community from our Mount Nittany Health standpoint. And that is that we welcome all patients, visitors, staff, providers, students, and volunteers without exception, and embracing the values of teamwork and respect along the way. And I think that pretty much captures the essence of our team members who are here to support the community because the community is our family, they are neighbors, they are our friends, and we welcome all. And so, thank you for taking the time to recognize the team at the hospital, and we really do appreciate the support.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I think we're so fortunate here in Center County to have a, a hospital system like Mount Nittany Health and the extent of the services that you're able to provide in terms of specialists and hospital service and outpatient settings. It's really such a comprehensive health system. And for it to be still a community-owned system and that's not, you know, still has, is not tied to large national groups is pretty rare. So, we're, you know, I think it's really important to recognize that this, this is a health system that is entirely, you know, based in our community. And, and this, our support, community support for that is pretty critical. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. You touched on earlier, we, you know, this, this building used to be the Center Community Hospital and now it moved to the Mount Nittany Hospital. And if you think about the changes and the, and the growth and the advances in technology and services that Mount Nittany has provided over the course of those years, it is kind of exciting to see what the next, what the next chapter will be because it seems like there's always another layer of, of technology or services that you're providing. And since we have to wait against a couple of weeks to find out what's coming to Belfont, you're not allowed to spill the beans or anything.
Well, I think the borough wants to know first, so.
Well, we won't, we won't share it with them. But our little secret here today, just between us kids, so. No, but anyways, it's, it, I think it just demonstrates the commitment that Mount Nittany has to our community. And I think we've all enjoyed the services or at least endured the services that you've had to provide in the case of, you know, we don't always go to the hospital willingly or, or perhaps that's not how we like to spend our vacation. But we do appreciate the fact that you're there for us. And a lot of communities would be envious to have, have the services that you provide. And we really do appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much.
So, thank you for coming in and send our best back to, to your team and, and everybody who makes things happen up there.
Well, we will do that. And these proclamations that we're very appreciative, they, they stand in prominence at a gathering of all of our staff members who participate in activities, and, and I think they really, really do appreciate it.
We appreciate them, and hopefully we don't have to visit them often, but we're there.
Yes.
You're there for us when we need you.
Understand, yep. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Well, thank you. At this time, I think we could take a motion to adopt proclamation 20 of 2025 proclaiming May 11th to 17th as Mount Nittany Health Week in Center County.
And I will provide that motion.
And I will second that. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion has passed. If you'd like to.
And Gary has a question from the back.
Is the patient tower, I've been asked, is the patient tower going to be for specialty care or is just a reflection you're seeing more and more demand for patients?
Yeah, Gary, so we, it, it, we're actually creating all private beds, 168 private beds with state-of-the-art technology, telemetry, larger care spaces to accommodate not just the patient but also visitors and the care team. It'll allow us to redesign our workflows to better support the patients and give them the best views of Happy Valley. And so, it's taking the 260, portion of the 260 licensed beds that we currently have and converting them all to private beds in that tower.
In the past decade, the more medical facilities countywide, is it a reflection of the growth that the county is growing over or just simply demand?
Yeah, I think access is always a big challenge, in particular in rural communities. And, you know, we partner with many of our neighboring health systems in many regards. So, yes, we face the same challenges that any other rural community and county faces across the country, which is an aging population, which brings on chronic illness and disease at a higher prevalence. We also have access challenges and, and face the same challenges when it comes to recruiting specialty physicians and other types of providers. And so, yeah, I think that's endemic.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the press? Okay. I think you want to come on up and do a photo then with the proclamation?
Okay, it's you and me.
Yep. Sorry about that.
So, if I can stand outside the flags this time.
Okay. Yes. There we go. May it with you this call. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep us all healthy and safe. We will.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, then, I will, go ahead and move on to bids and proposals. Our first item, or, or, or the only item here is the Center County Sheriff's Office Parking Lot Upgrades RFP. So, do we have, we've got Jonathan here to introduce this item for us.
Yes, good morning. I'm asking for your consideration and approval of a contract with Bowman Excavating, Paving and Concrete for the upgrades to the Center County Sheriff's Office Parking Lot. That contract is in the total 77,353 and 25 cents. Bowman was the contractor that did the Willow Bank office, and we are very pleased with the work that they did there.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay. Any, any questions on this item? We had discussed it a bit at the last Board of Commissioners meeting.
Yeah, I think the, the interesting thing about this is it's, it really was the genesis of, it started when we discovered what would have been an underground part of the old jail that, that they paved over. And this is not only repairing that, but sealing the asphalt, making, making a nicer parking area for the sheriff's, many, many vehicles, so.
Correct.
Yeah, I think this'll, this'll be a good asset to that department and a more permanent fix to the, what was not exactly a sinkhole, but behaved like a sinkhole last year. So, so I guess we can take a motion then to approve the contract with Bowman Excavating, Paving and Concrete for the Sheriff Parking Lot Upgrade.
I would make a motion to approve the contract with Bowman Excavate.
I will second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that item has passed. I think moving on then to capital projects, we have consideration for a contract with AutoClear Security Inspection Systems. And I'll, I'm trying to see who's there. Is Jonathan still there or is this?
Yeah. Not Brian.
He made me, he made me do this when he doesn't want to ask for too much money. So, I'm here to ask for the approval. We do have to make an amendment to the proposed budget of 56,550. John didn't include the, the two hand wands for $428, so the total amount would be 57, 978, or, or, yeah, 56, 978. So, not, not to exceed 57,000 would be, would for the, for the consideration for the approval of AutoClear Security Inspection Systems. Do purchase two security scanners, x-ray machines, two walkthroughs. They come with a four-year, four-year, three-year warranty, and they have the roller bed. It's just basically the same setup we have out here at the Willow Bank and, and security across our county.
Great. All right. I think that's an important security measure that we're, we were planning to do for this building, so.
And two hand wands as well.
Commissioner Durson, any questions?
Oh, you got, you got two hand wands?
Yeah, that's what the other 400 is for, so it's not to exceed 57,000.
Okay.
Okay.
That's pretty important stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yes, that's for the approval for those several items.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion on that then?
Absolutely. I like, I would, let me get my glasses on here so I can get this correct. Make the motion to add the contract with AutoClear Security Inspection Systems to next week's consent agenda.
And that will also be.
I will second that.
Whitmer, I don't know if you need Whitmer's Public Safety as well for the 400 additional? Do you need to add that or no?
I don't know.
It's not, it's, I have a copy of it here. It wasn't.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda for this.
No, what we could do is we could add it to next week's consent agenda for same-day approval.
Yeah, okay. It's just, it's, it's the two hand wands that were left off the.
It's a separate contract, though.
Separate, separate company.
Yeah.
Well, they didn't come through, I guess, so.
Yep, so I, I would amend the motion then to, for the, are you just add it to a consent agenda?
Yeah, I would just add.
Okay, okay, you're fine. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Yep, we'll take care of the other one next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Great. So then I will second that motion. All those in favor of adding the contract with AutoClear Security Inspection Systems to next week's consent agenda, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that item has passed. Moving on then to probation, do we have?
Yep.
Yes.
Good morning, Board. We have two items that we'd ask the Board to consider. The first being the Juvenile Probation Services Grant Funds through the JCJC. We would ask that the Board accept $104,043, and those funds would be used for employee salaries. The second item is we would ask the Board to consider approval of a contract with Jefferson County Juvenile Detention Center in Ohio for our department to use on an as-needed basis. You know, to be clear, the intention is to continue using CCYC. This would only be for emergency situations in which we'd have no other housing for the juvenile. And this would be at a $225 per day cost.
Okay.
I think it's.
Yeah, my understanding was this was, you know, just for an as-needed, to have a backup option.
Correct, yep.
Absolutely. All right.
All right.
I will make a motion to accept the grant funds for the Juvenile Detention, or Juvenile Probation Services Grant and then add the, the contract with Jefferson County Juvenile Detention Center to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, those motions, that motion with both of those items has passed then.
Okay. Thank you, Board.
Okay, they're moving. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to criminal justice planning, I think we have Carrie here to introduce an item related to the Indigent Defense Grant.
Good morning. So, I am here in place of Carrie and in partnership with the Public Defender's. Oh, I can't see, I'm sorry. That's okay. That's okay, Commissioner. Does that, I am just standing in for Carrie. So, in partnership with Public Defender's Office, we have before the Board today to approve a project modification to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. It's in regards to the Indigent Defense Grant. This grant was released for us last year for the first time to help support the Public Defender's Office. The grant is now being added to with additional funding and additional timelines. So, in total, the grant will now be $198,650 from the period of July 1, 2024 to December 31st, 2026. And we will focus this funding on expenses that are needed in the department, personnel costs, training costs that are specific to the needs of the department. We'll be looking at equipment and supplies that can help offset costs, consultants for some software that they need, really the ability for us to help support and, and, and provide funding for the Public Defender's Office, which historically has been out-of-county funds. So, this grant helps us offset those.
Sounds good. Commissioner Durson, questions?
I was wondering if there's anything you needed to add from the office.
Nothing I'm gonna add.
Oh, you can join us and.
Yes, I'll. I just want to say this grant is such a, a big opportunity for our office. You know, historically, public defense is not funded through the state, and, and this is the second year we're seeing an additional grant. And it really helps with costs in the office and, and being able to provide adequate representation to our clients, it, it really changes things. I mean, it can cover cost of evaluations and, and just keeping personnel in the office. So, there's so many things that we use this money for that gives this effective representation to our clients, which is entitled under the Sixth Amendment. So, this is a really great opportunity, and we're glad that it is extended for another year.
Can you touch on a couple of specific things that you're doing with the money that?
Yeah, so, interestingly, our Public Defender's Office does not have our own trial equipment. We do not have a projector. When I go to trial, I'm using the DA's equipment. So, with this new addition of funds, we're actually going to purchase a projector. So, when we conduct our trials, we're using our own equipment, which sounds very minimal, but it's something that our office never had. So, we're very excited about that. It also supports training. Last year was the first year I was able to go to an out-of-state training, and it just gives us a wider view, knowledge of, of what's going on around the country within criminal defense. So then we can bring that information back and apply it to some of our, our low-level attorneys. And again, just overall, I mean, we're, we're doing a lot of really great things with it.
Good, good. Exciting to hear that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Okay. Then I think we could take a motion to approve the project modification for the Indigent Defense Grant.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the project modification for the Indigent Defense Grant.
I will second that. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that item has passed.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. Moving on then to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve this week's consent agenda?
I will make that motion.
And I will second that. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that item has passed. Moving on then to the check run. The check that I'd like to recognize on the check run today is for State College Community Land Trust. This check is related to an affordable housing project that they are working on in the Borough of State College that will also be accessible for residents who have accessibility needs. This was part of the ERAP funding from the federal government, which, a program that, on the tail end of it, we were able to use some of that funding to provide for actual construction of some new affordable housing in Center County. And with that, I would look for a motion to approve the check run dated April 17th.
I will make the motion to approve the check run.
I will second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on then to the Administrator's Report, I will turn it over to John Frannick for the first quarter report for 2025.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, the BOC has passed Resolution 1 of 2025, which allows the county administrator to execute any financial documents such as purchase orders, invoices, reimbursements, not to exceed $32,500 in which they've been budgeted or previously approved by the commissioners in a previous public session. Furthermore, resolution authorizes the county administrator execute any and all documents related to grants after initial resolution authorization by the Board of Commissioners to apply for such grant has taken place. Overall, there were 24 such authorizations performed during the first quarter of 2025, with individual monetary values ranging from zero cost and as high as $25,650. Of the 24 authorizations, 14 were software or tech-related services or renewals valued at $143,351.42. Three items for operational maintenance costing $28,200 were approved. One capital-related expense was approved in the amount of $3,867. One item was approved for legal consultation services costing $1,000. One item was approved for security bond costing $100. And finally, four no-cost agreements were approved in quarter one. The grand total of all expenditures authorized by the administrator in quarter one was $176,518.42. There was also one grant where the, where I took action, and that was relative to the Highway Safety Grant. There were $155 that were available, left over in 2024, that could be rolled over to 2025, and that required an action by the administrator in order to roll those funds forward. And so that was, that has taken place.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Any other, any questions?
No, that was pretty clear.
All right, thank you. I don't have a voter registration report this week. Moving on then to the executive session report, are there any executive sessions to report or hold?
There are no executive sessions to hold. However, the Board of Commissioners met an executive session on April 21st from 1:05 PM to 1:14 PM to discuss a real estate matter, and then the board met from 1:15 PM to 1:35 PM to discuss personnel matters.
All right, thank you. Our upcoming public meeting schedule includes a finance committee meeting at 9 o'clock on the 24th, Board of Commissioners meeting at 10 AM on the 29th in this room, and then Thursday, May 1st, Salary Board and Board of Commissioners meeting at 10 AM. Are there questions from the press at this time?
Nope.
All right. All right. Then I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second that. All those in favor of adjourning at 10:33, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right then, we are adjourned.
Thank you.